I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you doing the agenda?
I don't have any additions or deletions. They both say that we have a number of issues that we need to address in a non-public session this evening, including an initial discussion. We have fourteen B is the support staff contract. And before we discuss that in public, we need to have a non-public discussion about the negotiations themselves. And then we'll come out at some point later and take a vote, a public vote on the support staff contract that's being proposed. But I do have a number of other issues. I have a resignation that I need to discuss, a teacher I need. And I also have a student issue to discuss. So those will all be done under non-public later this evening.
Okay, minutes of December seventeenth, public and non-public.
I make a motion to accept the meeting points, both public and non-public. From December seventeenth, two thousand fourteen.
December second.
Second.
Any revisions, corrections in the minutes?
I have a question. There was a fair amount of dialogue relative to the, from my standpoint, relative to the budget discussions. That was not present, or is not present currently. And that's relative to challenging the line items relative to what is above and beyond a default budget. So there's a lot of material that I feel is missing that should be here. How do we address that?
I think you would have to make specific statements that would be read into the minutes.
Okay.
I'm guessing that that
I expect that.
That you felt were missing, so.
Okay. I'd like to collectively bring that information together and possibly forward that on to Mr. Blaine or others, if that will possible, as opposed to that. With the acceptance of the minutes as they are, but just will be duly noted that these were statements.
Can you read them afterwards?
We can read them in after. We can note the current minutes, that there are some, there will be an addendum with additional information provided.
Thank you.
I kind of have the same comment under new business, section B, about the budget. I know that we had some discussion about the fact that, you know, there's not much for us to cut in this current budget. But moving forward, we understand that that percentage increase cannot be sustained. And that's not Well, as Mr. Remy stated, there was not a lot of room for cuts.
Yeah.
And there's a little more discussion about, even though there's not much room for cuts, we understand that moving forward, we can't sustain that same percentage increase in the budget. Does that okay to add?
As part of the conversation, not to be read as if we took a vote to not to sustain a percent, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right, yeah.
If it's read in as part of somebody's saying Out of Justin's statement?
Yeah.
Sorry, out of Justin's? Yes.
Well, I believe the, under the administrative report, when we had two eighth grade students, in the other is I know, well, I don't know how exactly it's spelled, but I A N R M T E L I. I believe it's B I A N T E L L I.
It is.
I don't know, I A N, I
Yeah, it's I.
T E L L I.
Spelling.
Sorry. Well, I'm not sure it's exact, but I know it wasn't.
T E L L I.
Is it I N?
I A, I A N, I A N, A, T E L L I. I A N T E L I.
Okay. Were there omissions or corrections? Saying none, all in favor? Thank you. Any questions for both?
Yes, I said that, I'll probably get on.
The expenditures registered in the manifesto coming around the administrative report is up to date?
I don't have anything to receive this.
The council report, it's not your day, but will you tell us anything?
Um, so we're just working on, I went to Carnival right now. We wrote it on theme days.
Theme days?
Yeah, like for each day of the week, for Winter Carnival week. We have to just get them approved by Mr. Stack. I'm really not sure what they were. It was PJ Day, or Nerd Day, or something like that. And also after the last over meeting, when the diversity club came in, I forget who asked, but if there were other, like, clubs that helped out with that, and they said no. So I brought it up to the student council, and I asked our student council president if we could maybe help out with something, and like drawing up with them to do something, since nobody else seems to be helping out with it. So we didn't really discuss much about it, but.
And can you read in the dates for Winter Carnival in the minutes? Do you know what they are? Okay, well.
You know, last week, the week before my graduation. Same thing. I mean, no one's ever vacationed.
Well, that's good, you're not counting down.
Yeah, I know.
That's all right. School board committee reports, are there any questions for the board?
Winter Carnival would be the week of February sixteenth through the twentieth. I believe the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh is February twenty. What do you, what's the theme? I mean, each class has a particular, what's the overall theme, I guess, of Winter Carnival?
Oh, it's musicals.
Musical.
Oh.
Fifteen through the nineteenth.
Thank you. School board committee reports, negotiations?
So we do have an agreement, which will go over the details with the support staff. We will agree to by the, it was ratified by the union just prior to the break. The board will have the opportunity to discuss it in non-public this evening and take a vote to ratify it as well.
I just wanted to thank the chairman, that was
Thank you.
Drive my fire, but
It was, it was good.
Very well. Budget? The budget committee met December eighteenth to discuss the administration proposed budget and what we thought would be a reasonable number to present to the public. And we started with anybody who had looked at the numbers and thought, were there any places that could be cut? And I proposed a number, then Mr. Gluck proposed a number, and then both motions were defeated. And then Mr. Edin had done extensive work. He came up with a number of thirty-four million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, which was passed by the budget committee. There were five, maybe five in favor, um, twenty-four, five in favor, six in favor and two not. And it was expressed by those who did not vote in favor of that. It was understood why the budget was what it was. That it, what is being requested is basically just increases in costs in the fact that there's really no new programs. I can understand why the budget is what it was, but they just couldn't vote in favor of it.
What was the number again? Thirty-four?
Thirty-four, eight, one, two, please me. I didn't hear that. Thirty-four, million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. And once that number was approved, it was decided on next meeting, which is tomorrow night, will be to put the presentation for the public hearing together, which is next week. Any questions for Nancy, about the budget?
Thank you very much. School board chairperson's comment. I hope everybody had a wonderful vacation and there's a lot of work to do between now and March and to support our schools. Public comment? Saying none, school board comment? I think, I think Mr. Remy had something to add.
Can you say that number one more time, sorry?
Thirty-four million, three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred, eight hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-three.
Thank you.
That was a number that was derived by looking at certain line items, excuse me, in the budget. And we are, it was recommended, but it's not necessarily what action the administration took on that. I think it goes up a four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand dollar difference in our number.
Five twenty-two.
Five, five twenty-two, the difference. Five hundred? Five twenty-two. Seven hundred and twenty-five, yeah. Five twenty-two, seven fifty. School board comment?
I think that you wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. And to piggyback on what Ms. Edin said about a lot of work to do between now and March, when we really start getting into the budget process, we say, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. In this year, the budget committee has really done a nice job of publicizing what the budget committee actually does. Very brief bullet points of the actual meetings and the thought processes of the budget committee. And I know here at the board, we discuss it at all our meetings as well. But I can't help but feel that every time of this year, at this time of year, every year, we're still behind the eight ball. And I don't know if there's anything we can do to combat that. But I don't know that the budget process should just be talked about from November to January. It's a, that's a very short timeframe, because come next week, we're going to present this budget. And that gives us a month until the deliberative. So I, and I don't know, I don't have any answer. But I just don't know that the public is still getting it. As much as we are trying to be transparent, as much as we are trying to introduce new ways to get the information out there, we've added a lot to our websites. But we put a survey out there to ask people how do they get their information. But I think there should be, it should be an ongoing discussion throughout the year, as opposed to just from November to January. Because that's really the need. Once it's presented, until the budget committee really decides on a number, which is right before the holiday break, and that gives us, again, this is our first meeting, since the budget committee voted on the number, and we're going to present that number next week. So as I said, I'm not looking for answers. It's just how I feel about the process. And perhaps that adds a little bit of disinterest to the public. Because I think, I really believe we have to keep it at the forefront all the time, all the time. Even, you know, little blurbs of, you know, any increases that we see throughout the year. There's been an increase in such and such. We only budgeted for X amount of anything. We had a new student into the district, just so the public knows. We had a new student come into the district, we did not budget for this dollar amount. Anything that keeps the budget in the limelight, to keep the people aware of the difficulties we have in developing, maintaining, and sustaining a budget.
I was just trying to run it through my mind about how, kind of, applying what were the drop-ins, you know, and when? And why?
I agree with Nancy very wholeheartedly, and I agree with that immensely. I think that's where I've been driving my conversations, is the drop-ins to use Georgia. Are realistically the challenges we should be discussing. We have this coming up. This is my, these are the challenges we're about to embark, that we did not agree to, that are related to the default budget, that are related to the five-year plan. And here's what we need to consider advertising to the community. Here's how we're going to go ahead and inform the community. It's all about really disclosing, simplifying, and disseminating. Right? We should have a disclosed budget that we know we're going to be using over X amount of years. We're going to simplify the process for ourselves and the community. And as those challenges come up, we're going to disseminate what those challenges are. Not necessarily on a annual basis. So, not on a semi-annual basis, let me rephrase what I'm saying. You have twenty percent.
We'll take some thought as to how to make that clear and not muddy the waters. To get more information, if people are only watching, not to give. So if I, if I start talking about, say, something sort of untoward happened, of should there have been something in the, as an example, it's past, but the raise in electric bills that we all just experienced, should that have been talked about somewhere, somehow, by some one of us at some point, as just anecdotal, and oh, by the way, it happened in your house, it also happened for us? That sort of drop-in, I don't know.
The government has requested, or is taking on this transparency act for many years now. And I think in two thousand fourteen, there was something else brought in. And that's where ultimately, the budget books become more, you know, publicized and more friendly manner. You know, like you just stated, Jan, there's a raise in these costs. So as these costs are occurring, the community's seeing them happen. So it's kind of like, we drive down the street, we see communities that are doing, you know, fundraisers for, you know, the barometer. How much are we looking to raise? Well, our barometer is raising, and this is what's happening. And then that's really what we just need to paint, you know, technically. There's an easy use, an easy visual for them to see that happen. That's what it's worth. Those are the drop-ins. Transparency.
Transparency is one of those sort of skippy words, you know, it's, it's, um, we had a request in the budget committee. I, I think we're very transparent. And in that anybody who wants to know anything about us certainly has the ability to find out anything they want to know about the operation of this school district. So I don't, I don't know if transparency is the right word, because that has a little bit of a backstory behind it. Is that a good word? Transparency, to me, implies that perhaps somebody was trying at some point to cloud an issue. And I don't think that's what we ever do. I don't think, I mean, I don't, um, and therefore, I think we need a better word than transparency, because that implies that we haven't been. And there's, I don't think there's another public organization that more people can find out more about than the school district. About its operate, how it operates.
If you, I, true statement, and I, if you look at the budget book, the budget book is how many pages, anyone know off the top of their head? Hundred and something, I presume?
Or ninety-one?
Coming up?
Ninety-one.
So maybe the challenge is attention. Maybe the challenge is there's too much detail. And because we're a society now, where we pick up our phones and we just swipe a few things and we're done. So I was doing a pitch to a venture capitalist this morning. I have ten slides. I lost him after two slides, not because I was talking, because the second slide was too busy. So my comment is, are we potentially not capturing our audience the right way? And could that hundred-some-one-page binder be brought, you know, here's the ten things that you need to know, here's the things that you need to know? This increases, this increases, this decreases?
We do, we do do that at the public hearing.
But you said at the public hearing, I'm saying always.
Right.
A page that someone goes to and sees the barometer.
And I think it would be fair to say that, well, I agree with what you're saying. I think it would be fair to say that we, we sort of vacillate with this issue. Prior to my coming to the district, the budget, and actually, I think the first year or two that I was here, maybe even, the budget book came in four-inch binders.
Yeah, no, you weren't here.
No? You know, I mean, they were huge, and it was line item budgets, and, you know, it was, you know, all the detail was there, and it took months to pour over. I mean, talk about, I don't know whether that's transparent or not. But, you know, to get it down to two hundred pages is monumental. And the information that's in there is much more simple. But to be able to pare that down to a page or two of the right information is
Those who want to delve deeper will delve deeper. But those who cannot, or don't have the concept of it, are not going to. So you might lose that page tip.
The budget for them?
Well, you know, that's exactly what I was just thinking. Is this, is this like Shakespeare in the comic books? You know, it's, it's, I've been on the board forever and still have questions about the budget, and I do this every year. Now, I don't consider myself an unintelligent person, but I, I don't, how can I say? I don't have the eyes and ears to understand, like, somebody else who's immersed in this field. I, I just don't. And, and therefore, how do you simplify? It's like, I have a former student who's working in real fancy computer stuff at Rockwell in Iowa. And so he was talking to my husband, and I could, I mean, I just, it was like listening to water ripple, you know? I mean, there was, I didn't understand any of the words that were happening in the room. But they were pretty excited about it. So to do what you say in a really, really well-versioned format would probably be impossible. It'd be hard.
Well, I think it's just an executive summary that you can lift right out of the book. That's really all I think it is.
And that exec, are you saying then that that executive summary would be? But you'd have to wait for something to be done before you can summarize it. So, so where would the drop-in, or the bits and pieces along the way, would just be little information signposts or something like that, is what you're saying? That would bring somebody to an executive summary that had they been paying attention to all the little drop-ins, that's where they would arrive?
No, an executive summary that is legible, so that stands on its own.
Yeah.
Further school board comment? Are you doing, new business?
This is the first order of new business this evening. I just passed out a draft of the two fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen academic school calendar. Worked on this, and it, just for those who aren't familiar, we base our calendar off of surrounding school districts that send students to SST. And we try to minimize the number of days that are different, that the students who do go to SST are least impacted between the six sending districts. So this, this calendar represents our best effort to meet the days. Most of the days line up with SST. There are a few days that don't, just because of the way that some of the districts develop their calendar. And, you know, there's some districts that can't start before Labor Day, et cetera. So, just for the public audience, the first day of school for students would be August thirty-first this coming year. Teacher workshop days on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. We would have the long holiday weekend, the fourth and the seventh off of Labor Day weekend. The eighth is when the preschool program would start. And then we have a number of early releases woven throughout the year to continue a lot of the work that we've been doing around competency-based assessment, developing performance assessments. And then we have the two workshop days that are included from there as well, as we've had in the past. The tentative last day of school would be June fifteenth. That's not taking into account any snow days that we may have next year. Results in a hundred and eighty-one student days and a hundred and eighty-six teacher days. Any questions that board members may have?
So if I'm reading this correctly, we have one, two, how many designated professional staff workshops?
We have two. Oh. Professional staff or all staff?
All staff, yes.
All staff, okay. All staff, we have the first two days of school.
Right.
Professional staff workshop in November is just teachers. Okay? That's not a workday for the paraprofessional staff. And then the day in March is an all-staff workshop.
So looking at last year's calendar, we are, current calendar, partying with the same Monday.
Yes. And then what happens typically is that depending on the number of, we have to produce a calendar based on a hundred and eighty days of school. But it also goes by seat time. And our school day is longer than the, than the minimum standard requirement. So depending on how many snow days we have, if there's a need for professional development, things at the end of the school year, we have the ability at the end of the school year, we have the ability to, to let the state know that we're going to give the students that time off in June, but have the teachers in for, for the professional development workshop. One of the uses that, that we use, every other year, we train our entire staff, from everyone in my office to the custodians, kitchen staff, anybody who wants to come in, and professional staff. We train everybody in first aid and CPR on, on one of those days, because we, and inevitably we always have at least one day. That's how we, how we utilize some of the, the snow date time we accumulate. I'm sorry, I do need a motion if, if the board is so inclined.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand fifteen, sixteen academic school calendar as drafted.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Well, I have a question, I have a question, I mean, with the district, I mean, many communities around us are providing more, a fair, a few more days of professional development for the staff, but the district benefit from having more built-in days. So for example, giving them a long weekend, possibly half-day professional development or a full day where maybe, let the students go early on an extended weekend for a second. And I, I just see only that you really...
It, it is, but it's deceiving because the, the way that our bargaining in a contract is, we have the staff every Wednesday after school, so there's a lot that's not indicated in the school calendar per se, but we have two solid days at the beginning of the year. And then every Wednesday after school is, is meeting time, but, you know, and one, one of those meetings is a faculty meeting, but the other Wednesdays of the month are either dedicated professional learning community time or routine time, so there's, there's lots of time built in to the weekly schedule for those types of activities. So I'm, I'm not as, as concerned. The other, the other piece is it becomes a budget, uh, not a budget, contractual issue with, you know, some other school districts that I'm familiar with have, you know, we have a hundred and eighty-six day teacher contract. We have other districts around us that have a hundred and ninety-plus days. You know, so, you know, it's a bargaining unit, contract issue, so.
Further discussion? All in favor of the draft, approving the draft? Thank you.
Just, just for conversation's sake, what are folks' thoughts about instead of early release days, having delayed opening days?
Kids come late?
Yeah, kids come late. For example, in, in the school where my, where my son goes, on Wednesdays, every Wednesday, they have a late start, because school doesn't start till nine, nine fifteen or something like that, but we, we know it.
Yeah, some of the Catholic schools do the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, so instead of early releases from school, they, they do it in the morning.
My response is, I think it's a positive opportunity to, it, it presents a better opportunity for greater collaboration amongst the teams because as students are being dismissed, there's a lot more chaos and there's a lot more challenges relative to pickups and what have you, and so a lot of the classroom teachers are being left behind, you know, making sure those things happen so they, at that point in time, do not have, they miss out on another opportunity. So I, I think it's a great idea and I've seen those institute elsewhere, I think.
I'd be concerned, I mean, if we're talking about doing this regularly as opposed to the, the ones that are early calendar, I guess I'd be concerned about parents who immediately work and, you know, early release, well, okay, I, I'm going to ask someone there, you know, like, get in or you can get in all your own, but maybe get him on the bus to make sure he's on time. I tend to believe parents want, but at least in my case, I don't want to be there to make sure my child made it to school. So I think that, that to me would be a potential issue, the, the, of parents concerned in that.
The other issue too is, what time would they start? Because on early release days, we don't do lunch, correct, or do we?
We do.
At all schools?
Yep.
Ah.
Yeah, we have to do lunch, you know, kind of it's, yeah.
No, that's...
Quick story, in my first years as a superintendent, I opened the door if I did, tell me shut up. One of my first years as superintendent, we had a snow day coming and I was all prepared to have my computer out and my book out, all ready to make the snowfall, get up in the morning, we decided after talking to numerous people that we're going to do a two-hour delay. And the last phone call, because we can have an alert now system, it's going back quite a few years now, the last phone call that I made was to the high school principal and he said to me, um, "Mr. Blake, you realize that we have an early release today?" So I actually brought the kids in, fed them lunch and sent them. Still get, still get ripped.
What's nice lunchtime?
Four years later, I still get ripped by my colleagues for that.
Okay, we have a load?
I think there was a load.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Support staff contract?
Yeah, the support staff contract, as we indicated earlier, we, we have reached a tentative agreement with the Timor Regional Education Association's support staff. In non-public session, we'll talk about the particulars of that agreement. The bargaining unit has already ratified the contract before break, and so they're waiting for us, the school board, to hopefully ratify it this evening and then, once that happens, then the, the information contained in that can become public information and So we'll, we'll come back to that for, after the non-public session. Carol, we're going to do that under, we're going to do that under communications, okay? So, and then the last one on the new business is the warrant articles. Carol was passing out copies of, has passed out copies of the proposed warrant for this Give folks a minute to review that. Right out of the gate, I'm going to raise a question, especially given, we're going to have to skip that, especially given that this is being recorded. I'm wondering if the voting needs to be conducted at the Newton Town Hall. You know, there's been a great deal of discussion over the last couple of years about whether or not we could hold the voting at Memorial School in, in Newton. I would like to go on record as saying that I would like to see the, the voting moved back to Memorial School. I think it's more conducive for all voters to, to access the building in and out, regardless of the weather, it's much, it's a much safer location to hold the voting, and so I would like to pursue that with the town in Newton and see if, if they would be amenable to that. It's not my decision to make, but certainly might sound that conversation with them again.
It better happen before all of this stuff goes to print.
Yes.
We won't discuss Article Four?
We can't discuss the particulars of Article Four. So I, I guess the, just to go through quickly here, the first articles, you know, for board members, the moderator and the budget committee, if I'm not mistaken, we have from Kingston, Dustin, can you read this here? Say that again? Who's, who are the board members? Dustin and Wendy. The moderator is Rick Rusman currently. Now, the budget committee from Kingston is, Mr. Phil Fertile is in Newton. No, it's Roger Star. Okay, so those are the two seats that are, that are up in, in the budget committee. Article Two is usually general acceptance of reports. Article Three will be the operating budget. That's a tentative number that's, that's in there now, we don't know what's going to happen as a result of the deliberative session. Article Four will be the support staff agreement if it's ratified. Article Five seeks to expand the use of the facility used revolving fund that we currently have. We discussed this at the last board meeting, to make it so that it might be, may be used for maintenance, technology costs, improvement of district facilities and grounds. Put that forward to the voters. Article Six seeks to establish a cap, a capital reserve fund for the San Boyd Seminary Building with the money to come from the unreserved fund balance at the end of the, at the end of fiscal year, up to a hundred thousand dollars. This way we can start to build sort of a bank account, if you will, in order to be able to do something with, with the seminary building in some future prudent time, essentially get that account started.
The issue with that is that we have a committee that has been met with, that hasn't, haven't any. So I, I don't know if I'd want to decide on, you know, even the money, I mean, have me to come up with.
But that would only be if then. So, so if there's been no decision made by the time we close the books at the end of the year, we could appropriate the money, just with the money, it would be acquired to, right?
But the school board are agents, would be agents to expend those funds, so the school board would be deciding how you could spend that money.
Right.
And if...
And if the committee comes back and says with a recommendation to do X, Y, or Z with it, there'll be money available at the end of the year potentially to be able to pursue that.
Does the, does the school board decide how much up to the one hundred thousand dollars that would get funded into the account?
I know. The funding for the, from the unreserved fund balance will be decided based on, let's say we have the district, only had a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars remaining. The first depends on how, with, how the numbers, how the numbered warrant articles are placed on the warrant. So if the seminary was first, then the first hundred thousand dollars would go to the seminary, if, and then the techno, the remainder would go to technology. You can't make a decision to only put fifty thousand in at that point in time, it has to be in agreement with the warrant article.
In that case...
If you have that much left in unreserved fund balance at the end of the year.
If we have more than that, can we, we cannot.
Yep.
We have to do what says.
Oh, two.
So we would have to do this first, then technology, then anything else afterwards.
What is it, anything else?
Like, if sometimes at the end of the year, we have extra funds.
Yes.
Encumbrances, you're talking about this, so your encumbrances would be come before your unreserved fund.
Yeah.
No?
Okay. And then the last warrant article that, that I think we should at least talk about is to establish a capital reserve fund for technology. Technology changes so rapidly, we've spent a significant amount of time and, and resources in trying to get caught up with our technology in the district to provide students and staff with the tools that they need. I'd like to see the district start a fund so that we have monies set aside over time to do some of the upgrades so that it's not a continuous budget issue every year, worrying about, you know, how much are we going to cut out of the budget around technology? It's just, it's a huge expenditure. So I, I put it on there, I, again, these are open for discussion, this is just my thought on that subject. If there are other warrant articles that folks are of the opinion we should be putting forward in addition to or instead of, certainly with this, it's up to you. And the dollar amounts don't have to stay the same. Do we have to be a set dollar or can it be between?
Up to, up to.
Up to. But it has to, if we have a hundred, it has to be a hundred.
Yes.
That's the only thing that I'm, not wavering on, I guess, but whether the capital reserve fund for the San Boyd Seminary Building should be so specific to the San Boyd Seminary Building or it should be more generic, a capital improvement fund that could be used for the San Boyd Seminary Building if we, if we so chose, or it could be used to, for the move on banking and equipment.
Facilities and grounds, maybe?
Well, I, I, I mean, I, I think it's, it's good that the article is specific, saying, look, we have this purpose in mind and we really want to fund, you know, at least start to save for doing something with the seminary building, whatever that happens to be, you know, we don't know what it is yet until, until it's the outcome. I'm, I'm just not sure, making it that specific then ties aren't, like, that's the only thing we can use that money for is the seminary. If we decide not doing it, which is fine, I guess that would just go back to backstab and use the article. We're not doing any of the seminary building, we're going to, you know, whatever we decide to do, we're not going to have the money.
Let's say the purpose of funding the renovation and necessary maintenance needs the Sem, the seminary building and grounds.
I would, I would say that means...
It's not the grounds, it's just the ground.
Right, the district has a facility, capital reserve fund, so what you might want to think, based on what your conversation is here, you could expand the wording of that, like we're expanding the wording of the re... you could expand the wording of that, like we're expanding the wording of the revolving fund to include, you know, I believe that if my memory serves me correct, when that warrant article was written, it was written specifically for unanticipated costs associated with maintaining the facilities. So, you would need to expand that because certainly the costs associated with the seminary building would have been anticipated. So, you could choose that, Pat?
I might have missed this, so I'm sorry, but if this is, if these two funds are, these two accounts are funded in the 15, 16th school year, do they need to be used by a certain time? So, in my opinion, these two things, there's gonna be a need for that money at some point, whether it's next year or 10 years down the line, it's gonna be used. It's not leaving the district. It's gonna be needed at some point. So, I think it's a great idea to start stuffing money away for things that we need to do in the future. Need to be addressed.
And just as a reminder and just of why we got away from this way of doing business was perhaps we, the writing would be better now with some of these. But in the past, say, establish capital reserve fund for technology. Say it gets voted down. And then we buy a whole bunch of stuff for technology because we found it somewhere else. And that causes an explosion. So, I don't know, I think the purpose of getting away from running a school district on warrant articles. Because we had this discussion in the seminary committee meeting because the, there is a certain portion of the population who thinks this is a good way to do things. Let the voters decide. And if they decide not, we still have to run the school. And therefore, we're left with having to make up what we would have hoped had happened. So, it's, I don't know how you avoid that in good writing or.
Well, I think that over time, the writing of the warrant, the wording of the warrant articles and the way that we have to present them has changed significantly. What you're referring to are for very specific purposes, which is different yet again from what, these are capital reserve funds for future use. The problem that you run into is when you have a separate warrant article that says something to the effect, shall the school district raise and appropriate X number of dollars to buy this truck? You know, the 2014 GMC Jimmy for, you know, whatever purpose. You may have a need for that truck specifically in the next budget year, but as a separate warrant article, if the public votes it down, no means no and you can't purchase it, period. Whereas these articles are for future purposes that are not that specific.
Is that a very nuanced argument that's gonna be understood or is that?
I don't believe it's that nuanced. No, I think it's pretty clear.
It's two things. I can see where you were going with the warrant, with the technology and if we found the money elsewhere. But I think the seminary is a different unto in itself because we're not gonna find the money to ever do anything with that. So, I don't think that argument holds water with the seminary.
I wasn't thinking of that. I was thinking of that, this was going off in my head a little bit.
With the technology though, as Judge Blake said, it would be for future use, but there's always going to be technology that we're gonna need. Anyway, by establishing a fund, it doesn't take technology out of the budget.
No, I know that, but if the people think they've now got $100,000, why do they have to vote for it in the budget? In other words, if you have set aside money, then why, why do we have now?
Because it's guaranteed.
Well, all of this is, you know, a sensible, reasonable, rational conversation around the table with sensible, reasonable, rational people. And who have been sort of immersed in this. And so, I'm just saying, hang on, wait, maybe, think.
Yeah, I think, I think it could be misread that this is in addition to the budget. It's not the case, it's coming from the general fund, right?
Yeah.
So, it's not in addition to.
It says just the money to come from fund balance.
Right.
Right.
And to be used when you don't vote for our budget and we have to cut technology.
No, I don't think that is a worry.
But I mean, that's basically why. So, that would be the argument again. If they were to say, now you're finding the money, you know, whatever, well, we, you forced our hand and we had to cut line items. Therefore, we want this to be not a cushion because you don't wanna use that terminology either. We want that money available in the event that a budget doesn't pass and technology does get cut. But my question, I did have another. These two particular warrants, that's just for this year only, correct? Do they have to go on the budget, I mean, on the warrant next year, every year to add to these capital reserves?
Just like when you see like Carol, when they ask for like a big group of things. I have a caution. Carol, you said that the money gets funded by how it's placed in order of articles. Have we thought about technology going to the seminary then? Has anybody had thoughts? Is there, is there a reason why it's six and seven?
Just the way.
Just the way, so?
Yeah, just the way.
So, do we, does anybody have an opinion whether they want one or the other funded first? Or meaning more towards technology first?
I would second the motion to consider voting on the word.
So, if they both get passed, like what, what is the word?
Well, what happens is, is depending on how they're placed off the ballot and order. So, if, in this case, Article six, so if we only had $100,000 left, that gets funded first.
I almost actually consider they have collapsed into two into one. And almost looking at it, we already have on Article five, expanded use of facility using revolving fund. Almost changing six and seven to be capital reserve fund of similar language to that of Article five. Thus allowing it to be for maintenance, technology costs and improvement of the district facilities and grounds and utilities. Right? So, I almost wanna say the word utilities is, I look at the technology as a utility, not as a expense. Because you can't run a district these days or any environment without technology. So, to me, it's a fifth utility. Follow on.
You're saying to get rid of six and seven and add it to five?
I'm saying it's allowing the two, thus being agents who are able to be presented with an opportunity to vote what is necessary and what isn't necessary.
The only negative I see about that is that there's so much negative about the seminary that I don't wanna bring down, acknowledge, combine.
Yeah, no, I kinda like the step for as well, just to give people the opportunity to, I guess, express their opinion whether they want to invest in the seminary or invest in a fund that will some they've used for the seminary and also whether they wanna invest in, like, the technology and having them tied together. You won't get, I don't think you'll get that. It might be a telling thing the way, the way the vote goes about, I guess, the chances to me of what the seminary, from the voters' point of view, has potential for us, what we can do with it.
But do you have to state the word seminary there when you put grounds? When you put utilities and facilities, do you have to state the buildings? We have talked about baking, we have said baking here. It becomes diagnostic at that point.
But.
Well, that's kind of my original.
When you get into that though, then, then you're gonna get the discussion of, oh, that should be part of the budget process. That should be in the budget. So, I'm wondering, you know, it's a catch 22 with the seminary, they're jumping, I hear what you're saying. But I think when we put the last proposal out to the public, I think a lot of people liked it. They didn't want to fund it. So, I think that was a big factor was the dollar that was attached to that project. So, they see that we are trying to do something with this building at no cost to them.
It's not a no cost.
No additional.
Right, 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 right.
That's a very dangerous.
No additional cost, but by trying to establish this reserve fund so we can do something with that building at no additional cost. So, when we bring it back to the voters, what to do with it, they may be more agreeable because that price tag has gone down compared to the first. So, I don't see putting this to the seminary, I don't see it as a negative. I don't see this warrant as a negative at all.
Yeah, and I was saying, I mean, I guess I was saying to, I guess, to Cory's point. He was talking about combining them. I'd actually like to see them separate. You know, I'd like to see both the articles on the ballot. Because if you do combine them, then I don't think you do have a visibility of, do the voters understand again that we're trying to do something, again, with no additional cost to them? And hopefully down the road, when it comes to that, that we do need to do something or, or having, we're gonna be required to at some point, like you said. Whether it's because the heating system is gone and we have to heat the building or it's just going to fall apart and this could be used for that purpose if it had to, if it was an emergency. But, but it would give them an opportunity to, we could tally the votes, the votes could be tallied and we can see how these two different articles asking to save a lot of money, two different reasons, but to be allocated and how they felt to put both technology in and the seminary in. And initially, I was thinking of maybe making it more generic to a capital reserve than maybe, I guess, looking at the other alter that Carol mentioned about the existing fund that we have that we could look at, possibly adjusting the language to a warrant article. And saying maybe if that could be funded too. Because that is where the budget fluctuations and the whole smoothing thing that, level funding that Cory's talked about, you know, I mean, I think if we can possibly have some funds around like that that will allow the tax rates to be a little smoother and the budgets to be a little smoother. I'm all for it.
Cory, I think people more ask the spending of the seminary than they are, I think, combining the other.
I'm not sure that the Department of Revenue Administration would allow an article that was that sweeping or was that sort of broad in its, in its language of what you can do with the money, sort of like just opening a bank account or making it for whatever we want.
I don't see the language actually that far from different of Article five, expanded use of facility using revolving fund.
The revolving fund is different than.
Yeah.
No, but.
And we already have the warrant, we're just changing the verbiage. So, it's not, the actual verbiage for that revolving fund just doesn't include the highlighted. But the, I would imagine that the initial verbiage was very similar to what we had to do for establishing a fund.
Carol, the facility fund for unanticipated emergency type of things that you alluded to earlier, how does that, where does that money come from? How's that fund get funded?
Well, historically, it's been funded from unreserved fund balance when it's approved, when it's approved by the state voters.
So, in other words, we have this other fund sort of sitting out here that has X dollars in it. If we wanted to add to that fund, it would have to appear on this warrant again for voter approval to put additional funds in.
So, on Article five, I don't, I don't think I was six and seven yet, but I'm voting. So, do you wanna indicate that there's no tax impact to that anywhere? I mean, I know there is one. Do we wanna be clear that there's no tax impact to this warrant article by changing Cory?
The town does that, they'll put right at the bottom, there is no tax impact.
Or you're just gonna, just as a, making sure it's clear to the voters, we're not asking to, we're not somehow costing them money.
It's interesting though, John, even with that statement on there, how many things you'll get. But I agree, it should be this, there's no tax impact.
I guess my other question would be, you said that the number, the dollar amount, that we can change that? Is everybody okay with that?
Oh, the $100,000? I wish it weren't bad or nothing, but I hate to, I hate to reduce it. So, and we probably already said this, but it maybe went out of my head. If these were to pass, and then we are obligated to know. So, at the end of the year, when we maybe have this leftover, the fund balance, will we be happy that we pass these two things instead of some of the other things that we might have done?
That was just my question.
The, we would take care of any encumbrances, any of the things that we needed to do at the end of the year? That the board felt needed to be done at the end of the year would be an encumbrance. Once, once those things were taken care of, whatever is left is the unreserved fund balance.
Right, after that.
Is the unreserved fund balance.
So, it's a matter of timing.
Correct.
So, on the, on 11/59, on the last day of the fiscal year, if there's any money left over, it would be taken up by these guys. Okay.
Because Carol does ask for everybody's things to be in.
No, I just wondered legally, what, I mean, unexpended fund balance is unexpended fund balance, which we don't, we know before, 11/59, the last day of the fiscal, so when does this kick in? But you're saying it's after encumbrances that we wisely voted for three weeks ago or?
Correct.
Okay.
So, for final clarification possibly, in the event both articles are passed, without naming names to either of the two or the order, if Article six is passed and then when the agents, us, the school board are voting upon Article, there is money to be used, we could possibly deny the use for it at Article six and then thus the money becomes available for Article seven.
No, that has to be reserved.
If it passes, it's had to be. No, we only get to say what it's gonna vote towards, not that we'll vote to.
Okay, so, are there any more questions about the warrant? Did it really change, the number change?
Oh, do we wanna take a vote on the order of six and seven? Do we wanna include six and seven?
So, I have to do two of your votes.
Yeah.
I don't know if you wanna include or not.
I like motion to include Articles Six and Seven on the ballot.
I'll second that.
As stated.
As stated.
As stated in the draft that we have at Carlos.
Okay, I'll second that. Discussion, all in favor? Next motion?
Is that you?
I'll. Motion to have the capital reserve fund for technology, um, as Article Six. And then to have the reserve fund for seminary campus as Article Seven. Is your second?
Okay, discussion?
Um, I, I don't necessarily agree with that, or think that that's a good idea. Because we're not putting anything aside at this point for the seminary. Technology has a budget, money goes toward that every single year. Zero dollars is going towards anything for the seminary. So, I just think that anything that we're gonna stuff away should be for the seminary first, because that's gonna, at some point, something has to be done with it. At some point, something has to be done. So, I think that that should be the priority, only because technology is funded through the budget already. And it might not be as much as we want, but it's still getting money.
And if out of five passes, there is verbiage in there that would, it would, for recent rent charges, would use a facility so that it may be used for maintenance, technology costs, and improvement of district facilities and warrants with the facility. So, there's another word, the, the technology word as well.
But Nancy, could you read that as well for Summer?
Yeah.
So.
No, this specifically is the seminary building.
Yeah, but you just, you just indicated, there are, yes, there's a line there for technology, but I see the word grounds and facilities, and I see seminary as a ground and facility.
That's the entire intention of the article, to expand this, so it can be used for any building.
All right, um, I agree that there is allocated money on an annual basis, because quite frankly, though, is putting money aside gonna be helping the student that's in the more ill school today directly? Is, is, if you were to pass with the voter, now that's what I mean here, but would the voter say, I have a student who's in the school system, and technology is currently not where it should be potentially, and or better yet, there's better opportunities? Is, is Article Seven impacting the student in the classroom more than Article Six? So, that's a question. I think Article School Seven is.
More so ask a meeting right now.
But, but.
Oh, I, I.
Probably wanna vote in the ether, you know, okay.
I get that, and that's a, it's a very good point, but at the same time, this seminary issue, if, if continued to be pushed, it can be a much larger direct effect on that child over time. I mean, technol, technology is getting funds. I mean, I think that the school in general is pretty good with technology, maybe not at the forefront, but it's still pretty good.
You cut a lot of money out of the budget, or there's a line I haven't plugged with that. I agree, I, tough conversation.
My only comment on this is that, I think historically, we've always had more than two hundred thousand dollars. Is that an accurate statement? But definitely an energy statement. Well, we have a little ass.
We, we even know for that we've always had.
Much of the way.
We've always had some enough money left over. I mean, I know we, we have to operate in that fashion, we can't spend down on the last penny, because you don't know what's gonna happen in June. You don't know what's gonna happen in May, so you have to have something there to decase if not pay something. But, I, I guess I'm just saying, it's, I, I don't mind moving it, I, I don't know whether, I mean, internally, it sends a message to us maybe, but to the voters, I don't, if there's a message there, because they're not gonna understand necessarily that that's the way they're funded. And I think they're both gonna get funded if, if they get passed adequately. So, I, I personally don't have a problem moving it. I, I know the seminary is important, I know technology is important, it's too bad it can't be, you know, seven A and B or, uh, I don't wanna combine it, like you said.
But, but it's creating an opportunity for divide at some point here, in the event that there's a hundred thousand dollars left on the table, a hundred and twenty. That's, it's created a divide. And by doing that, I actually, I'm gonna say it now, I'd rather vote against on both. Because quite frankly, I'm not gonna wanna be put in a position to vote for one where I know the other might be more important. Because quite frankly, we might put, again, in next year's budget, an increase for the seminary, because the seminary committee came back and saying, we need this, with a more strategic plan.
That will have a little less that. That's all, I mean.
You never know. So, I, it's an awesome idea. I think if you combine the two, up to, or maybe limited to, on both. You say, with an opportunity to vote up to in seven, or we'll say six A, six B, up to, up to.
We already voted to keep six and seven.
Says up to, wasn't it?
No, I'm saying if you combine the two.
You can't combine, you won't, that, that won't get approved by the county director. To combine the two.
Yeah, I just, I look, I don't look forward to the day when there's a student that moves into something that they don't have money. I just, I don't wanna create a divide.
If you put. But this is technology first, and the seminary second, create a divide that way as well, with, if there's only a hundred.
Is the community more, again, we more apt to vote for technology or seminary? Because the community has a hold of both districts, both.
I, I don't know, I don't wanna speak for the public, because I, I really believe that they would welcome the opportunity for the seminary, I really do, because they know that something has to be done with it. There's no question. And that, that, every, everybody knows that that's a vacant building, sitting, and what are we going to do with it? And they see that we are attempting to decrease the cost of whatever we attempt to do with it by establishing this, this fund. I think that they would welcome that.
Ask the lady, Mr. Ball, where would you go with your money? Where would you go with your money?
I don't.
I'm not sure about that.
I mean, just I'm sure also.
Well, I just wanted to say one more thing, and that is that, just historically speaking, this capital reserve fund for the Sanborn Seminary came up in that committee. Right, I mean, it was talked about a lot. My feeling politically is that having it first is going to go very well with a very large members of the public who would vote for it. And maybe put something a little to rest. And I think, I'm in agreement with Dustin, the technology thing is in the budget. I think it's a little confusing to have the capital reserve on the part of the voting public. Why do you have that? I thought that was a big budget thing about that, why do you have to, you know, that's, it's, that one's vague to me a little. The seminary thing is clear to me, as a positive move on the board's part to solve an ongoing issue. The Article Seven is a little bit, to me, might be conceived of a little bit as a, as a grab, for more money. That's just me speaking politically. In likelihood, if they both pass, they both get funded, given our district. But I think having, I think there's something to be said for having six first. And I just, I, Carol, I think it's gonna verify, but I thought at some point, we have the same article out there, and it did not pass for the technology, capital reserve for technology. We had it on the ballot, and I don't believe it passed.
That's right.
Did you go? And it didn't pass.
Really? And, because I think I would be either, why are they asking for more money for technology when it's in the budget? That's, that's where we, again, we educate people a lot.
And I don't know if it failed the, the, this vote. So, we never read it on the mark, because the draft mark would have.
So, I couldn't support switching the order. I think politically, we're in better shape with it the way it is. So, all in favor, more session? All in vote, I think the motion is to switch the order and have seventy-six and six be seven, so if you vote no, you're going against the switch.
And then I also wanna amend my vote to even put that article off.
With seven on six.
That's a separate.
That's a whole nother issue.
I know.
Okay, so, so. Is, which one?
We've, we've already, I'm gonna say, we've already made a motion for six and seven to appear on the ballot.
Right.
As is, the current motion on the floor is to change, simply change the order of those two, so board needs to vote on that, and then if you wanna reconsider the other vote, then you need, that's a separate motion on the other.
That's a reconsider, we haven't had a reconsideration yet. That means someone on the.
Opposing.
Opposite, no, no, on the, it was unanimous, I mean, somebody would have to say, as a matter of fact, can we even do this without a reconsideration?
I wonder about that.
All tell of entries, I, we can't vote, if we already made a motion and accepted to have it go as that order, then we have to vote to reconsider.
You just made a motion for them to appear on the mark.
And, and the order wasn't in?
I just say as.
Okay, so now the vote is, if you want to change the order.
As written.
Yes, as written.
Can you read that, the motion back, please, get it?
Number one.
Oh, Miss Silla Blanks.
Miss Silla Blanks' motion was to switch the articles, number, Article number seven to now number six.
That's mine.
So, it. Oh, Miss Silla Blanks was to improve Articles Six and Seven and stay in the document.
So, so we would have to vote reconsider now. Yeah. So, that means somebody has to have a, a vote to reconsider, so somebody wanna make a motion to reconsider.
I'd only wanna do that after I hear of the.
No, it has to come first. The motion to reconsider has to come first.
In order to change the others.
It's, it does.
We have a motion on the floor.
They should, no, it has to be.
That motion has to be.
Rescinded.
Rescinded first.
I'm totally agree.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to rescind the existing, or, existing motion to consider switching Articles Six and Seven as currently stated on the two thousand fifteen school district warrant article presented today on January seventh, two thousand fifteen.
I can, I'll type it there. Discussion? All in favor of rescinding? I don't think that was correct, but. Um, 'cause I think the motion, by, by just happening, it shouldn't have happened.
So, the motion to rescind them.
So, there's no motion on the table at the moment? No, the only thing that's, we voted on now is to have six and seven appear as written, and we voted unanimously to have six and seven appear as written now. Does somebody wanna make a motion about switching your?
Or reconsider.
You have to reconsider, then motion will pass. Oh, yeah, reconsidering the motion that passed to keep it as written.
Yeah, I need.
Hey, you.
I need the motion to rescind.
No reconsider.
Reconsider the prior vote of, of approving Article Six and Seven as, as a.
Is there a second to that? Okay, is there discussion about that? All right, all in favor of voting to reconsider that vote, raise your hand. It's opposed? And so the motion failed. Dustin, I think you misunderstood the vote. Was that? I, I do, because he looks confused, number one, and he didn't wanna change the order. So, by voting not to reconsider the order, what is stated as a vote? So, it did, it, the motion to reconsider failed because it was a tie.
So, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out here in just a moment. Let's, and, and ask, if we can put parliamentary procedure aside for just a moment, what are the wishes of the board in terms of what we want to happen with these two articles? And then we'll figure out the motions that we need to make to get it to that point.
I think it looks like that.
I have an issue with putting the seminary campus. They need money into that before we do anything for the kids. So, I guess, I'm concerned with the vote that I made, not thinking ahead about the order of articles. So, I'm not willing to support that article if money's gonna go into that before that, that's my issue.
So, are there other concerns with these two articles that, in addition to what Windy is, is indicating?
I, on record, will say I feel the same way, that the community may consider voting both articles in in the event that Articles Seven and Six are lost. Better yet, with understanding, yes, we've had financial assistance over the years, that both needs. But, quite frankly, I think that as a whole, the community may value Article Seven or Article Six.
So.
Cause that makes a possible.
Okay, so then we've been, look, so, are, are is the board still in agreement that both articles should appear on the warrant, but in a different order?
No. It's not, no, that's the, that was just the title.
Okay. So, we, we, so the motion that's.
The reality on the floor now is that they're going to appear as written.
As written.
Now, we can run it around again for a vote, to see if we want to reconsider that motion.
That's what I was looking for.
Right, that's what I was trying to understand.
That's what.
Okay, so the motion was taken.
And voted.
And voted on for the articles to, to appear on the warrant. As written, or in the order presented?
As, as written.
All right, now, I don't wanna split hairs, but here's, here's the nuance. As written versus as presented on the warrant.
Are we parsing, so is.
Well, I, I don't, I don't know, I, I.
I think the way to clarify that is to ask Mr. Blanks' intent, when he made the motion.
Mr. Blanks' intent was to, I like both articles, I did not necessarily care what order they were in. I like both articles being on the warrant, warrant this year. So, I guess I did not have the intent that I was prescribing the order because I, I might, thank you, there were both articles on the board. So, if there's a separate vote related to order, I don't think that supersedes my original motion in any way.
So, would it be correct to, to amend the wording to say as presented? Something of that nature?
We're not include that at all, but the, the, the wording should simply be that Articles Six and Seven, the language of Articles Six and Seven will appear on the warrant, period.
I know, it's there as written, because that's at six, and then at seven, and then they have the motion.
Switching.
And then they rescinded the, the motion. Well, um, I don't. I don't know, I don't know if we.
I mean, I, you took a motion to reconsider and it would fail.
Yeah.
So, it failed.
Yeah.
So six and seven appear on the warrant as presented?
Six is six and seven is seven.
Correct, okay.
And the motion to reconsider failed because it was a tie. This is one.
Yeah. Can you just start over?
No, you have to, you, you can't just, that's what the rescinding wants, very hard. That's what the, that's what the motion to reconsider does. You can't just start over because, and, and, and I really would have to stand pretty firm on that. You can't just say, oops, and then just, just do a whiteout, you know, or etch a sketch and, and, and start over. Cause there was a recorded vote.
Which was unanimous. And because it was unanimous, the second vote, the second. Well, sorry, the motion on the table should not have been made because it was unanimous. So the motion that Wendy initially made to change the order should not have been made because the first vote was unanimous. So in order to override that first vote, you need to first vote for a reconsideration of that vote and you didn't do that. That's what happened with that.
But there was two votes presented at the time.
There were not. The first vote was presented and voted on, then the second.
I heard, I heard, in, in this splitting hairs, I heard vote, discuss, vote. In between that, we're in the discussion phases and we asked to rescind that. Is that a fair statement? We're talking, that's why I'm here.
Yes, we didn't even vote on.
There was a vote, there was a vote on.
The first motion.
On the first motion.
And we were discussing?
No, we vote, no, we voted on the first motion.
Correct.
Then, which was unanimous for them both to appear. Then there was a, there was another motion made about the order. It was a motion and the second. Then we were discussing, we hadn't voted on that.
And we didn't vote. And we didn't because we should, we had the motion on the table without a reconsideration.
Why? And I'm confused now. I'm wondering, what were we reconsidering? Those two, two separate things.
Because the motion as it's read, the one that was unanimous and was approved, was to have it.
Appear as written.
As written.
Well, that wasn't the intent though. That's why we, that's why I was making that second motion. For all intents and purposes, that was not the intent. We had discussed having two separate votes.
Yes, but there was a reconsideration and a fail.
Right, but.
At the end, right?
I just want to further market that.
Yeah.
That, that's wrong. We, in discussion, said that we were talking about having two different votes. One, I asked, as a matter of fact, the question. I asked the question.
We need to go back, we need to go back to.
I specifically asked if this was gonna be.
Well, we can, we can either use an etch a sketch or we can do it right.
No, we can, well, we, we, we can attempt to do it right. So, read back, work in reverse order, read back the last motion that was made.
Wendy Miller made a motion to reconsider the vote. Of switching the articles six and seven. Corey Mason seconded the motion. It was required, they against, the motion failed.
Okay, and then go back to the, the motion before that.
And then before that, Miss LeBlanc made a motion to switch the order of the warrant articles.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear. Go ahead, Gil.
Corey Mason made a, a motion to switch the order of the warrant articles. Nancy Ross, um, seconded the motion.
No, that's rescinding.
No.
No, I second.
Going back on more, Wendy Miller.
Miller.
The motion to switch article six and seven. And there was no vote taken on that one. I didn't get a vote on that one.
Cause we had not voted.
And because, I mean, the first motion on all of this was Miss LeBlanc, the motion to include article six and seven to appear as written.
And Ms. Ross seconded that motion from data.
Okay, so here's what needs to happen. Miss LeBlanc and Ms. Ross, you need to, to. Make a motion to reconsider. You're gonna, um, yes, because you're gonna reconsider that initial vote because you seconded it and you made, you made the motion. So you have to make the motion to reconsider that and then. We'll take a motion to reconsider that, that first, very first initial motion that was made.
That was what that reconsideration vote was, Wendy. That was the only question here on that because that's what the reconsideration should be.
Yeah.
She didn't, she doesn't.
Right, but the problem is that I specifically asked before we voted originally if we were going to take another vote on the order. And now you're saying that, no, it was as written, you can't have a vote.
And interestingly enough, Wendy, I seconded Mr. LeBlanc's motion because both Mrs. Bennet and I said as is with the assumption that it was going to be in that order. Which would have precluded a second vote. Had the, had the motion not been made with, in my mind, thinking that it, that it was in order. Then it, then what Dr. Blake had said, correct, it would have been a second vote. But when both Mrs. Bennet and I asked Mr. LeBlanc as is, in my mind, it was in that order and it would preclude a another vote. That's exactly how I do that. But I, I don't have an issue with voting on a reconsideration. I don't. I'm making a new motion. How, what, whatever will move this conversation forward.
Are you not getting what I'm saying?
I'm trying to.
Exactly what I asked before we voted was, are we going to be able to change, are we going to be able to vote on?
Yeah, let me, once I reconsider, we'll get back to square one, I think. So I would like to make a motion to reconsider my original motion, which was to keep article six and article seven as is on the warrant article.
Is there a second? I seconded it. Does it have to be you? Oh, did I have to do that?
All right, I'll second.
Yeah.
Who's?
All right, so.
Wendy made the vote.
Wendy seconded it.
No, John made the motion to reconsider.
His initial.
The initial, the initial motion. Because it was confusing, I apologize. Okay, okay. We will get.
And who seconded it?
I, I seconded it.
Okay.
All right, further discussion? Okay. All in favor of a motion on the table, which is to reconsider, um. Mr. Blank's motion.
And to clean, to be able to clean it up.
I would, I would reconsider. Square motion. Or back at square one.
I think we should.
Just so.
All right, it's unanimous now. The floor is open?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Six and seven?
No, so now we're gonna, now we're gonna make an amendment.
Square one.
Okay, so you can just point out everything.
The slate is cleaned now.
Correct. I'll make a motion to. Accept article six and article seven on the 2015 school district warrant. As warrant articles in the order in which they are written.
Why don't you read them?
Then seven. Six is to establish a capital reserve fund for the Sanborn Seminary Building. Seven is to establish a capital reserve fund for technology.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is this mean to, so with the preclusion, I'm gonna read the definition, to prevent the presence, existence, or recurrence of making impossible any further changes to the order?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Are you stating the way you, why this would be presented and the way you just asked this motion is to preclude or to prevent the presence, existence, or recurrence of making impossible the changing of order? Is that what you're asking?
I, I didn't say that in my motion, so it would depend on the vote.
Aren't you asking them to accept it as the warrant articles presented right now, which is six and seven?
Mm-hmm.
Right, so.
Right, but with specificity, so we don't end up in the same, in circle that we were in before, so.
Because now, all in favor of the motion on the floor is to have article six and seven appear on the warrant as written?
Isn't that, not, not as written, but in that order and.
Hold on a second. Do you want to do two separate motions, one for six and one for seven?
No, I just.
Because we're motion on the floor.
Yeah, so can we, all in favor?
Well, can you please just explain the motion? Is it in the numerical order, as written, as presented, which would preclude the changing of six to seven or seven to six? Should it pass?
Yes.
A numerical order as written.
Correct. All in favor, raise your hand. Four? Opposed? To the motion carries.
We should, we should have voted on them separately because I wouldn't have had a problem approving them separately. But because they were lumped together as article six and seven. And you voted on the one that was not there.
It was approved.
Okay, so can we move on?
No, if we had made a motion to vote on article six. If we had, if we had made a separate motion for article six to approve the warrant article and then we had made a separate one for article seven. Then I would have voted on four one. I would have voted on. But because they were lumped together, I didn't vote for either one. See what I'm saying?
It was passing anyway, so.
No, but no, because now you didn't allow me to vote for what I wanted to. By lumping them together in one motion, I wasn't able to give the school what I wanted to give.
Right, but you haven't made that decision yet. Right, that comes after the next, our next school board meeting. When we're gonna go article by article.
And then you vote.
And you vote on each individual article. As, as you can see, at the bottom of the articles, it says recommended by the Sanborn Regional School Board, for and against. At that point, we'll take individual votes on each article. And you'll be able to.
Right, I just wanted you to see where I'm coming from.
Yeah, understood, understood.
In the future. Better not to lump things together because people have different, they have different.
We, we actually could have said, I make a motion to approve the 2015 school district warrant articles as written, to, period. And have gone through each one. What Dr. Blake has alluded to is that we didn't, all we did was say, we're gonna put these on here. We are gonna take a vote on whether or not.
No, I know, I know, but I'm just saying that.
Thank you.
Okay, communications received and sent.
None.
Um, written information?
We have several. Issues. Um, we have the, and I believe I brought this up at the last school board meeting as well. We have, I received information from the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. For the New Hampshire School Administrators Association Champion for Children Award. That's awarded to, um. Program sponsored by the New Hampshire School Administrators Association. Each SAU in the state can honor a local champion for children. So I wanted to just remind folks that that's out there. It's typically somebody who goes above and beyond their normal. Responsibilities in, in the community as a, as a. Can be an employee, but typically it's, it's somebody in the community who does a great deal of, of work on behalf of the school community. Few years ago, we nominated and, and was actually the regional champion for children, Chief Don Briggs. For all his work and, and working with us in the school system as well as the, the greater community on behalf of children. So, I open that up for folks. If you have any ideas, um, forward me the name. I have a short application that will fill out. We can nominate anybody that you see fit.
Discussion? Any, um, agenda items for next?
We also have a second piece that I'm gonna turn over to Carol. Received information from the selectmen that they're having a company come in and have, begin discussions with them. January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, Town of Kingston Board of Selectmen's meeting. It's at seven o'clock at the Town Hall and it's in regards to a solar project for. You received the information and the invitation to attend the meeting. Carol has a little bit of background information that you can provide for the board.
So this is a solar TV project that would be installed at the landfill on one twenty-five in Kingston. I was contacted by one of the representatives of this company a few weeks ago and he came and collected some data with regard to our, the district's electrical cost. And right at this point, I believe that it's for the Kingston and Newton schools. They're giving a formal presentation to the Board of Selectmen in Kingston. So, um, the Kingston, the Kingston Board of Selectmen had invited the school district to take part in this project. Which would essentially save electrical bills in the future, for like twenty years in the future. What I'm told is that there's no upfront cost for capital outlay. And that would be, um, sure paid for by the savings for the generation of electricity and the sale of electricity. So, you're all invited. Anybody who'd like to attend, you're invited to the presentation on January twenty-sixth. It is a Monday evening at seven P.M. Mr. Riley and I are planning to be there and we'd be happy to, um. Seven P.M. At the Town Hall. We'd be happy if, um, you know, anyone of you wanting to do this. Just to listen. In addition, this, the firm that's presenting this, we'd be more than happy to join this school board as well. So, um, you know, based on, I think, we'll take the first steps with the Town in Kingston. And based on, on the results of that meeting, perhaps you might want to have them, invite them in to give a presentation.
Any further discussion?
Thanks. Carol, huh? Excuse me, Carol, have you looked, um, at, um, this company's reputation and, um, projects to date?
I mean, I've looked at the projects to date. I haven't checked any of their references. I've looked at the projects that they presented here.
Nice, thanks. Agenda items for next regular meeting? We'll discuss the public.
Public hearing, if otherwise, four minutes. Community reports.
Anything else? Okay, that's it. Um, public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Pharoah Gannon from Kingston. Just wanted to comment on a few things that were mentioned in the meeting tonight. One, in regards to transparency. And I would agree with the chair that I, I believe that the school board has, has, from my knowledge and my involvement in many years, has, has been very transparent. However, there's not a lot of people who know what the school board does, so I don't think it's. So, I don't think it's an issue of that there's, anybody feels that there's anything being hidden. But it's just getting information out to the public and, and having them know about the workings of the school district. And I applaud the efforts of the school board and the intentions to try and reach out to the public to help them to understand how the school district is run and how the money is spent and the good things and the bad things about the district. I would also like to, um, comment on the vote that was taken tonight on the order of the warrant and the warrants being on. And I think it was confusing, it was confusing to me. If anyone would like to look at the videotape, that might clarify. But, um, I, I, I'm not sure that the public would really understand. And I think that when this is presented at the deliberative session, that it needs to be made clear. The board couldn't understand the reasoning about the order and what that means. I think that needs to be made very clear to the public when they're voting. That it means that if there's money left over in that amount, that it all goes to the seminary before it goes to technology. Like, that needs to be made very clear. I think that's gonna be a, a big job if, if the school board members have difficulty understanding that. Another comment I wanted to make was in looking at the warrant, um, and I'm sure that you can't explain this to me, but perhaps it will come up at the deliberative, is I was just kind of struck by the support staff agreement that in the first year...
And we're not talking, Chair, I hate to cut you off, but...
I'm sorry.
Can't talk about that.
Can't talk about, can't talk about the amounts?
No, because it had, no.
It has been...
Exactly, that's appearing there.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Your board comment?
I apologize for that motion and I will...
Nobody's holding you.
Next time.
No one's holding you.
No, no, I know you don't hold it, no, but I...
I apologize for my...
I took away fifteen minutes of your life this evening for a vote.
I voted no for a reason, I will mark that for...
It was okay, John.
My parliamentary procedure, because we had such smooth operation for the best views and these things have come up, I just wasn't quick enough. So, I take the blame, I wasn't quick enough to stop it before it got fixed. And I apologize for that.
Announcements? The Sandmore Regional School Board meeting, the next one, will be Wednesday, January twenty-first at seven P.M. in room one thirty-seven. The Budget Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, January eighth at seven thirty P.M. in room thirty-seven at the high school in Kingston. The Budget Committee Public Hearing will be held on Wednesday, January fourteenth at seven P.M. At the Sandmore Regional High School Auditorium, Seventeen Danville Road, Kingston. The filing position for positions on the Sandmore Regional School Board, the Sandmore Regional Budget Committee and the district moderator will open on Wednesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen and end on Friday, January thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, at five. The candidate filing forms may be obtained at the SAU office from eight A.M. to four P.M. The school district clerk will be available on the last day to file from three P.M. to five P.M. At the SAU office, which is now located in, in the Sandmore Regional High School, Seventeen Danville Road, Kingston. The first deliberative session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Wednesday, February fourth, two thousand and fifteen at seven P.M. at the Sandmore Regional High School Auditorium, Seventeen Danville Road, Kingston. The second voting session of the annual school district meeting will be held on Tuesday, March tenth, two thousand and fifteen from eight A.M. to eight P.M. in the Swayze Gym, Sandmore Seminary Campus for Kingston. And a location to be determined for the, the Newton Town Hall for Newton voters. Could I have a motion to go into non-collaboration?
I'm making a motion to go into non-collaboration. I would say, man, you want that? Is calling, all right.
Joe?
It'll be A and C.
A and C.
A and C.
Thank you, A and C. Sorry about tonight's meeting. Okay? Is this already?
Yes.
Miss LeBlanc?
Yes.
Miller? Yes.
Ms. Ross? Ms. Mason?
Yes.